We are tweeting. As soon as we get that up, they'll create a link. They'll put this like on, start recording from there.
It's okay.
Can I have a motion to?
It's up.
It's recording. It's recording.
It's recording. Where you are recording, we'll be able to put the live feed on later.
Or. Live feed later, right? Okay.
Okay. It'll get posted later. We'll continue, Mr. Garcia, if you want to continue.
I was actually waiting for Ms. Cooper.
He's tweeting for me, but I can't get my computer out to see this specific policy. I just don't have access. I'm trying to, I'm trying to wait until my hotspot.
So, take the post and then we're talking.
Yes, obviously, no change.
Nobody would call me.
So, any, any, any of the policies where you see them, those are many daily changes for straps estimated over our service provider. And there's an M next to P zero one forty-two. So, there was a stress estimate change that the policy committee reviewed. Oh, many data policies. Okay. I thought that identified.
I can see why that is. P zero one forty-two was any community member who is also a trustee of the Westwood Board of Education may concurrently serve on the board of district parent organizations. This was accidentally removed and it was revision, and it wasn't intended to be removed. So, we just put.
Superintendent, I am that that's our policy, but that doesn't supersede the PSOs' policies. One, seventy-two. Serving.
That's why I'm going to just.
Can you repeat that again, Ms. Cooper?
Sure. Any community member who is also a trustee of the Westwood Board of Education may concurrently serve on the board of district PSO. So, what it's basically saying is that being a trustee doesn't preclude you from being a participant in a PSO organization.
Okay. So, my clarification, that's from part of, we're not restricting it, but it doesn't govern, micromanage the PSO. The PSO can still limit board member. No?
I'm not a hundred percent clear on that, Mr. Garcia. I'd have to consult with the certain school boards and our attorney about that. I don't believe so much.
Okay.
I'm just going to reiterate this point that I put up earlier. There's absolutely no need to shout from the audience. I understand everyone has feelings. The room wants to express themselves, and that's, that's great. But we really don't need cats going from the audience. If it happens again, whoever's cat going from the audience is simply going to be asked to be removed from the building. Thank you.
In response to your question, I believe the district has a policy, it's nine two one zero called parent organizations. And there is a sentence in there that says representatives of recognized parent organizations shall comply with all applicable board policies. So, in other words, the PSO cannot supersede the board.
All right. So, all right. You think that's pretty clear then? So, what we're saying is what we see rules over the PSOs. All right. Thank you. Any other special?
Mrs. Becker.
So, may serve on does not mean that they have to be allowed to serve on. The PSOs operate independently of the Board of Education. We don't govern their bylaws. They have their own sets of bylaws and should be allowed to govern themselves independently, just like each district. I mean, each school building, PSOs at Brookside are different than the PSOs at George School, but they're not forced to govern themselves the same. We should not be governing them. They're separate entities.
Anybody else? I think if I look at the existing policy that Mr. Peterson read, that we would need to have a little further education on this and consult our board attorney and school boards. A reminder, this is first reading for policy.
Good. Thank you.
Any other comments?
For the next, this is all the, the back one that we went today asking about the policy. Display the flag. Clarification, the policy. Can the policy to me, I mean, I know specifically. So, when it says on or phone, does that mean, is that restricted to the flag pole outside or did I give it to the United States flag and New Jersey state because the ons?
Yeah. It's right outside. On or above, I think is what it says. Let me just double check. On or over. And actually, you raise a good point too, because somebody else had a question about the policy, which I meant to answer to when we were done, which is why does it say, why does it have a section in the policy? Let me just pull it up really quick because I wiped it now. Why does it say districts have purchase of United States flag? The only reason that image is in there is in case a school's flag is ruined through weather or over time, it just mandates that the school has to replace it. So, it's like that language. But yes, it's meant for outside.
So, we will not restrict any flags or anything within the building or on other flag poles down specifically outside.
With this, with this policy, this policy in your state relates to external. I am, I'm not sure where you're confused on when you say any flag pole. Any flag pole outside of a school in our district will display the United States flag and the New Jersey state flag.
Only?
Only. No other flags of any kind.
And, okay. So, that's with this policy. Okay. Outside.
Mr. Peterson?
And just, you know, I know we have some board, new board members. We had this discussion last year with Dr. Mortimer, and those were her wishes too. So, this policy is basically just, you know, finalizing how she wants to operate the district.
Thank you very much. I just, like I said, I wanted to be clear.
Okay. Any other discussion? See, Dr. local?
Mrs. Cooper?
So, if I recall correctly though, that when Dr. Mortimer did say that that was her request, she also did ask for a legal opinion, and the legal opinion did say that if the areas around us are moving towards displaying pride flags and that if we decided we wanted to, that we could create a policy that would allow for flags to be flown outside, really not necessarily on the same flag pole, but they could be displayed outside of the school.
That would be a separate policy. That would be a separate policy or a revision of the existing policy.
I, for one, would like to avoid any flags other than the flag and the state flag of New Jersey to be flown outside of the school because I don't want any special interest flag flown over any government building. And I understand everyone's feelings. I've really heard everyone tonight, and I feel how strongly people associate and identify with a flag that represents their interests, their livelihood, their gender identity. So, I believe I don't want to have a debate about why an NRA flag is not going to fly outside this school or why a pro-choice or a pro-life or any other flag that symbolizes a political interest outside of the school. Whether or not it also includes your, your identity and your belief construct, I really believe that unity is really important. I mean, I, I hear all of you. I struggle because when we, when we talk about, and, and I realize that what I'd like to, to explain now is an unusual and unconventional point of view from the folks that are here in the room tonight. So, I'd ask you to bear with me and please just listen to a, an alternative point of view. In a free-thinking, free citizen, free country is not obligated to believe anything because someone else believes he or she ought to think or ought to vote or ought to rank his priorities a certain way. Many people approach difficult issues and values differently, and I, and I truly respect that. That's their call. Live and let live is what I'm really trying to go for. There's a concerning reality, and especially when I hear about association with flags. I want a unified community. I want people who regardless of where you come from, what your belief system is, how do you identify, how you live your life, is live and let live. And the only flag that I believe really encompasses that is the American flag and the fact that we all live in the state of New Jersey. I think that not every political special interest, not any political special interest, not a red flag, not a blue flag, not any other flag should fly over a school. I recognize that I am here to represent all members of the community, and I truly believe that I am when I am saying that the United States flag and the state flag of New Jersey is the appropriate flag to fly outside a building. When we talk about inside the schools, I think that is another really important and valuable discussion for us to have.
Okay. Any other special?
You saying pride flag is a special interest? That you're really celebratory?
I think it is. I think the pride flag is a special interest. And, and I mean, look, this is the way I describe it. How would you describe it? If you could sit back, I just can't see Jay.
Well, I just, here's the reality of it for me is I feel like this policy, as it's written, it opens up itself to more. Now, I won't be wedged into a corner and say, you're either a patriot or you're inclusive and acceptance. I am both and proud to be an American. That flag means the world to me. My family is foreign wars, and I couldn't be worried of now that any other country here. At the same time, so I am in favor and for a designated flag pole for the, the United States flag and New Jersey flag. I'm also just concerned from what other people have done in the, that we are going, that it's going to slip into not being able to represent anything in celebratory fashion, celebration. But if this is, if that's what my clarification was, that just.
I really, I really hear you. I think there is a larger discussion to be had. We can have it tonight, but I get the impression everybody's tired. We can have it at the next board meeting.
I'll stay tuned.
Please turn it off, Jay.
I love you.
I think this is a really hard conversation, and I think I'm trying to give it all the due diligence. When I think about, and again, this is an unconventional point of view. I acknowledge this is an unconventional point of view. I don't think, for me personally, that it's a positive status quo to reinforce that the pride flag is the only flag that would end up being flown as a special, special interest flag. I don't, I think that is deluding ourselves because we will have other requests for other flags. Once you fly long enough to fly off. But I, I take it away from, I want to think about how I'm going to phrase this. It's as much as, as I understand, and many of us understand, the pride flag to be political, I think we can also acknowledge that we want the school to be welcome for all students. And they accept, we have to accept for a group of children, the flag is also a message of acceptance, whether we like that is the, the message or not. That is the message that our students understand when they see a pride flag and they identify with the pride flag. My concern with the flag, any flag, is that it creates division versus unity. If the school continues to send a message that the only places with a flag are welcoming places, I think in the long run, it does us disservice to our children. Not every place for a person that waves a flag and a pride flag at that is friendly. Not every place for a person that doesn't wave a pride flag is unfriendly. Neutral does not necessarily equal, unfriendly or unsafe. There's such a disturbing trend that I see regarding this political positioning that if you're not with an ideology, you're against an ideology. That's criminalizing people who are neither unsafe or unwelcome or dangerous, but just neutral. I think unwelcoming or rejection, as painful and ugly as it can feel, doesn't equal, unsafe or dangerous either. It just is those things. When we create a mentality that our children look for a flag to decide who is welcoming and who is unwelcoming, we're creating more divide than we are creating unity. Welcoming is not virtue signaling with a flag. Welcoming is the behavior that we emulate and how we live. That's what welcoming truly is. It's not a flag. I don't have a pride flag hanging in front of my house. That does not mean that I am against the ultimate equalized community. I'm not that peaceful. I think, however, there is a reality now that is currently that our kids view this flag and they feel accepted, and that is true. And I think we have to accept that. But I think it is something that in the long term, we should discuss because when our children go out into the world and they see the world, I don't want them to perceive pride flag means friendly, no pride, pride flag means no. And I think that's an impression that many students are starting to develop. So, I think it is worth a longer dialogue. A flag, you're willing to say, girl, I'd like to listen to it. But that is just a perspective that I offer. In the long term, we shouldn't need the pride flag for people to feel welcome in our community. It should not be necessary. Like anything, there is time, place, and manner. And as we scale, we grow as a community, as we decide the direction that we take, as we figure out how we're going to engage with one another, welcoming and accepting is not indicated by a flag. I don't want our children to feel like they need it. I want them to be confident, authentic, courageous in and of their own right, not because there's a flag that tells them that they're safe, because it doesn't. It's not, does not mean safe. It does not mean safe. You make yourself safe. Your community makes you safe. The people who are around you make you safe. So, I recognize that's an unconventional opinion. I truly do. It is just a perspective, my perspective about the flag.
Thank you. So, we're talking about a flag pole outside. That's all.
Mr. Garcia, I thought you escalated about, does that mean for something inside? And I, I answered your question.
No, thank you.
I would, I would really, really appreciate the courtesy that I showed you.
I appreciate that. Ms. Peterson, you just said, I'm rude, but I wasn't trying to be rude. Just saying, I thought I was rude. I wasn't trying to, just trying to clarify.
Okay. Listen, hold on, wait. To speak, you have to be recognized, right by the chair. So, let's bring this discussion back to the focus here. We're talking about a policy. We're running down rabbit holes. It's after ten o'clock already. There's still a ton of board business to do. This is a first reading. You have a policy in front of you for a first reading. We have a motion on the floor. We're going into discussion that goes far beyond the context of policy thirty point zero one. I would just ask the board to focus on this. If we want to add things to it, send those suggestions to the committee chair prior to the second reading to see if they can be added in or not. And some people will come in front of the board for a second reading and adoption or not at another meeting. And you can also vote no if you disagree with the policy as it's placed in front of you this evening. Do we have any further discussion recording? Mrs. Becker?
I just have two things to say. One, the pride flag is not a political flag. And two. While I may not have a pride flag in my yard. It does not, it does not, putting a pride flag in front of my house would let people know that I am a safe place. So, excluding not putting one there does not mean it's dangerous, but putting one there does send a message to some children or people that it is, that they are included and it is a safe place.
I just, I just, I just feel, look, we're, we're up here to have discourse and dialogue. I don't, I invite opinions that are not my own, and I'm not going to discredit you for having them, and I only expect the same courtesy from you and Jay and the rest of the people in the audience that I give. My, my observation and my point of view are not invalid because you disagree with them. They're not invalid because you disagree with them. And we talk about respect, and we talk about courtesy, really everyone, we talk about respect and courtesy. It takes just as much vulnerability, strength, and courage to stand up here and have an opposing point of view as it does to be part of a group of people. Having your point of view in the audience, I, I hope that discourse and, and true open and honest discussion are welcomed here, even if they're unpopular.
Thank you. In, in reading what is currently presented, I, the spirit that I am understanding in policies is one under unification, one for that we are all a part of these blessed United States. And I am seeing this as a, a policy of unification, not a policy of, to, to create further divide. And I think, I think that, that needs to be mentioned, that what is, what is written here is meant to unify the entire district.
Okay.
I just want to say that my sexuality isn't a special interest at all. And yes, it isn't necessi, like it shouldn't be necessary to have a pride flag to make things feel safe, but it is, and that's the reality. We're, like, my community is need to feel like outsiders in this school, and I, the pride flag makes us feel accepted. It tells us that administration, that teachers, that our other students also accept us, and it actually unifies us and makes us feel part of the Westwood community. So, it really is necessary.
Hold on, hold on. Mrs. Price?
Mackenzie, I am so upset that you need a sign on somebody's door to feel the same as the other building. And, and I'm saying that, and I'm saying this, and I'm sorry, Mr. Pontell, I'm going to go a little while, like everybody else has, so can you just let me, give me a little, the, thank you. I, in my classroom, because unlike some of the statements I'm hearing tonight, I am, I think I fall into a highly educated New Jersey credentialed teacher in health physical education and drug research education for twenty-five years. And as Mr. McCallister said so nicely, a skilled expert in my craft. And it would dishearten me greatly if you were one of my students and you didn't know you could walk into my room regardless of what was hanging on my door. Because what's hanging on my door is a cover of the window for safety and security purposes for my classroom because I have to make sure my door is locked so that nobody in my classroom gets hurt. Nobody. Not you, not any student in my classroom. And that is how every single student in every single classroom in every community should feel. And I believe that the teachers in our district, no matter what they're flying outside of their room, you can find a safe haven in those rooms. And if you can't, if you can't, and please, I'm saying this with all my heart and soul, if you can't, we have a bigger problem that we need to address. Because it shouldn't just be about, you know, and you, and you have a lot of courage to make those statements, and, and I appreciate that because I feel that, because my, my children graduated from here, and I graduated from here, and all the people graduating between, nobody should have not felt safe inside their buildings. Nobody. So, if you need that flag, we've got a bigger, we've got a bigger problem for everything in the area.
Yeah, you have this.
So, we, we need, I don't know how, we can help with that. But I'm sure that every single person sitting in that audience with a red shirt on, every single administrator, has heard that concern tonight, and that's, that's going to be the next thing on all the administrators' agenda and teachers' agenda, to make sure that no matter what, you feel safe when you're in school. Okay? I appreciate you. Thank you.
Mrs. Cooper?
Ms. Lox, in the first few statements that I made, I made a point to note that I know that is how the flag is perceived, that I understand that it is the reality. My goal, I think, I think Ms. Price said more eloquently than I did, is that you should never need it. You should feel authentically safe, well, authentically safe in who and what you are, and never be judged on your sexuality, the color of your skin, the religion you practice, where you come from. You should be treated the same, period. That's my point about do we need this flag? Because I think that there has been an education process that says, we hang this flag and that means you're safe here, when the real process should have been, you're safe here no matter what. It shouldn't come down to a flag. Other thing I worry about with flags is that it applies to one people, not to all people. And that's why I, I am so vehement about the United States flag being the flag that connects all of us as citizens of this country. You are entitled, as every student is entitled, and it's the hill I will die on, to the right treatment, to be treated autonomously, independently, for who and what you are, and then sexuality, and all of the Title VII protections. And even if you are not protected by Title VII, you should never be marginalized in any way. So, I wasn't eloquent in that. I'm sorry, I'm trying to be more eloquent. My issue is, I don't want you to need it. That's the way I'm going for all of us.
I just feel like I wouldn't need it if this district kind of worked on their inclusivity instead of trying to get rid of things in the curriculum.
Okay. See, that have a little polish, was up.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Casano?
Yes.
Mrs. Finargian?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes. Just on the flag pole outside.
Mr. Perino?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
No. It states here, inside or outside all schools in the district, so no.
Mrs. Peterson?
I'm sorry. Can we just clarify, is the policy for just outside? I don't see that in my reading of the plan. I'm looking at the policy that was attached to the board agenda.
Just, just the, just the policy.
Yeah. I'm going to, for sake of speeding the process up, the policy for consideration number eighty thirty point zero one, display of flags reads as follows. The Board of Education believes that the flag of the United States is a symbol of the values of our nation and appeals embedded in our Constitution and the spirit that represents rights given to all in our district. The district shall purchase the United States flag, flags that are necessary appliances for its display upon or near every school building. There shall be a United States of America flag on display in every assembly room of every school. The only flags that are permitted to be raised on or over district, school, administrative buildings shall be the United States flag and the flag of the state of New Jersey. The flags shall be thrown at full or half staff pursuant to law, consistent with national and state law and regulations in this policy. The superintendent of schools shall develop rules and regulations for the proper custody care and display of flags. The flags of other sovereign nations, as recognized by the United States, may be displayed temporarily as appropriate relation to the approved curriculum for instruction. That is what the policy says. So, you're mistaken and vacated in what you did, Miss Beck. So, we're, we're voting on the policy, not the notes. Can you please confirm your vote or?
No.
Thank you. Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Pontell?
Yes.
Motion here. Okay. Nineteen personnel, Mrs. Beck, nor with agenda items A through B, please.
I make a move from that on the recommendation of the interim superintendent, but who will be given for the following reservations for the purpose of. No, it states here, inside or outside all schools in the district, so no.
I'm sorry, can we just clarify which policies for just outside? I don't see that in my reading of the plan. I'm looking at the policy that was attached to the board agenda.
Just, just the, just the policy.
Yeah, I'm going to, for sake of speeding the process up, the policy for consideration number 8830.01, display of flags reads as follows. The Board of Education believes that the flag of the United States is a symbol of the values of our nation and appeals embedded in our Constitution and the spirit that represents the rights given to all in our district. The district shall purchase the United States flag, flags that and necessary appliances for its display upon or near every school building. There shall be a United States of America flag on display in every assembly room of every school. The only flags that are permitted to be raised on or over district, school, and administrative buildings shall be the United States flag and the flag of the state of New Jersey. The flags shall be funded full or half staffed pursuant to law, consistent with national and state law and regulations and this policy. The superintendent of schools shall develop rules and regulations for the proper custody care and display of flags. The flags of other sovereign nations as recognized by the United States may be displayed temporarily as appropriate relation to the approved curriculum for instruction. That is what the policy says, so you're mistaken and vacated in what you did, Miss Beck. So we're voting on the policy, not the notes. Can you please affirm your vote?
No.
Thank you.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Pontell?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay. Nineteen personnel, Mrs. Beck, nor with agenda items A through B, please.
I make a motion that upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent, but who will be given for the following reservations for the purpose of retirement?
Mrs. Beck, you can just move motions A through...
Move motions A through...
A through B, B.
B, B.
One second.
Second.
Mrs. Finargian, discussion on personnel. Seeing no hands, have a roll call, please.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Casado?
Yes.
Mrs. Finargian?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Perrino?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yep.
Mrs. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Pontell?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Number twenty, finance and facilities. Mrs. Peterson, can provide agenda items A through B, B, please.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to move agenda items A through B, B, under finance and facility.
One second.
Second.
Mrs. Cooper, one second, if I have any discussion. Seeing no hands, have a roll call, please.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Casado?
Yes.
Mrs. Finargian?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Perrino?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yep.
Mrs. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Pontell?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Curriculum and programs, Mrs. Price, can move agenda items A through C, please.
I'd like to make a motion to move agenda items A through C.
One second.
Second.
Mrs. Peterson, discussion. Seeing no hands, have a roll call, please.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Casado?
Yes.
Mrs. Finargian?
Yes.
Mr. Garcia?
Yes.
Mr. Perrino?
Yes.
Mrs. Beck?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Price?
Yes.
Mr. Pontell?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Move on to agenda item twenty-two. Should be our second public forum. During the second public forum, on any topic specifically addressing the agenda or on any other questions, comments, or concerns of maybe in respect to the operations of the school, or policy zero and six seven requires an individual's son or speaker's name and address and ask all the marks. He directed to the board as a whole, not individuals. The board asks that members of the public be peruse and mindful of the rights of other individuals when speaking. The board asks that during this second forum opportunity, public speakers adhere to the same guidelines, follow the same practices, and extend the same courtesies and decency as with the first public forum. Each speaker's statement will be limited to three minutes in duration. This second public forum will be limited to thirty minutes in duration unless otherwise extended.
Can I just make one?
No, no, you can't. We're not done yet. There were three people who were waiting to speak when we lost the time. We'll get them in the first. We're going to allow the three speakers that were originally slated to go in the first session to speak first. After those three speakers have gone, there's been a request from the WBA president, Mr. Chris Pinto, to speak on behalf of his membership. Instead of breaking that up into multiple people speaking on their behalf and to put anybody else in the spotlight, Mr. Pinto has requested that he have approximately eight minutes to speak, give or take, we're not going to hold you to eight minutes, on behalf of the people that he represents for the association and out of respect for the teachers in this district, I would like to offer that courtesy to you. Does anyone on the board by show of hands have any problems with granting that one-time exception to the WBA? Let the record reflect, I see no hands. The fourth speaker will be Mr. Pinto on behalf of the association. With that, we will open the next public forum, starting with the speakers that had moved from last night. Thank you.
My name is Delia Reyes, 275 Fourth Avenue, Westwood. I would like to take the time to thank the board for their time and devotion and for trying to create this ADHAC committee. Back in September, I sent a detailed email choosing to have my child opt out per the provisions of NJSA 18835-4.7. Any student, if any, any students whose parent presents the principal assigned statement that any part of the instruction to health, family life education, or sex education is in conflict with their, with his or her conscience or sincerely held moral or religious belief shall be excluded from that portion of the course where, where such instruction is being given, with no penalties or loss of credit for graduation. When the numbers of opt-out were revealed and it was acknowledged that my child was not considered an opt-out student, and I asked why, it was explained that it needs to be done by lessons and that my request was not granted. We have some board members here that are so focused on following the health curriculum to the T, but this provision also comes from the state and it allows parents to have the opt-out option. So why do parents need to go through different channels to have their wishes heard? Why can't it be so straightforward where an email is sent and you know exactly what child needs to be opted out? Because like we saw, a teacher could change lessons and they could go on and take topics that like families like myself opted our child out. So why is this not being honored to our students, our parents, for their parental rights? So if lessons could be changed and because it's not on the grade level that it was in that curriculum to be taught and not the lessons, how is the board for the district ensuring that our parents' rights are honored per provision NJSA 18835-4.7? Also, also I have heard many concerns from taxpayers, social media, their concern about our funding. I want to make it clear, and maybe parents might not know, that that process goes to CUSAC. CUSAC audits our district in every aspect of how a district is ran. I want to ask the board administration, in the past years, how many times are CUSAC being a perfect score? Because if this is a problem where only in the curriculum section is where we will have a point or two taken away, how does it really affect us? Because we, I would like to, I don't know if it's accessible to the public or our community to see those reports on how the past we have scored. If it is, I would like to see it. Thank you, have a good night.
Hi, Heather Frere, University of Florida, Michigan, Washington. About eating out and about opting out of the standards. Three things to say about it. First thing is simply that I support the standards. I brought them. I think they reflect reality. And I think that's important. I'm a teacher, I'm a parent, and I also served on the, I was working in Franklin Lakes, the affirmative action committee. And we talked about ways to make sure we complied in our district. And we talked about the importance of students seeing, having a mirror instead of a window, which is particularly relevant because I'm a Spanish teacher, but I was also a ESL teacher. And that's an issue with diverse students, no matter where the diversity comes into play. So we talked about that, about seeing themselves reflected, not just seeing other people unlike them. And I think the standards address that. That's one thing. The second thing is, to be honest, when I first heard that it was talked about opting out, I said, what? We can't do that. That's not the thing, okay? As has been stated, the standards are law. The state creates the standards, we choose them, okay? And if, that's outside of the purview of the Board of Education, of the local Board of Education. Now, if people want to individually, as parents in the district, address this, would the state go for? But that is not what we should be doing. Simply stated. I'm sorry, I have to say it, okay? Which then I was starting to think, well, what should they be doing, you know, instead of that? Because I do feel like this is a huge waste of time, including mine, by the way, because I buy the things from you. Coming here, I'm happy. And that, which brings me to the final thing, which is what, do I think we should be doing? And there was a survey sent out recently and I filled it out and reflected what I do think. I do think we should be working on our acceptance, our inclusivity, our tolerance, and just by their kindness. I, as a parent, have heard things happen in the district that I'm really not happy about. I actually haven't heard about students or people being told they should, they just can send their kids to a religious school, but I do know families who have sent their children, if you moved outside of the district, or sent their kids to other schools, even with how things like bullying were handled. And that concerns me. I also wanted to highlight, as Mackenzie said, I'm trying to focus that bit, like, I want to be direct with it. And, um, when people tell you they don't feel safe, believe them. You can choose to believe it or not believe it, but just say it isn't so, doesn't mean much. So, thank you.
Mike Piero, eighteen, Paul and Drive, Westwood. Thank you for your time tonight. I have gay members in my family. I love them and they have been my go-to caretakers since day one. In regards to the discussion about the health curriculum, I would like to thank the board for their efforts in navigating the many grievances and points of views that have been expressed. The parent's statement of conflict with conscious state, any child whose parent or guardian presents to the school a signed statement that any part of instruction in health, family life education, or sex education is in conflict with his or her conscience or sincerely held moral or religious beliefs, shall be excused from that portion of the course. I'm not going to claim to know all the facts, but when I see these gender ideologies on the bullet points, that raises a red flag for me because these ideologies are the basis for some of the language in clause fifty-seven, fifty-six that is eroding protections granted under Title IX, eroding the sanctity of private and intimate spaces, and more broadly, eroding objective truths. This is an agenda that is being pushed into the school system. These ideologies are part of the belief system and they should be held to the same standards as other belief systems under the statu- establishment clause of the First Amendment. It is my hopes that members of the ADHAC committee take this seriously and in a non-partisan way, come up with a rational conclusion. With that being said, I have not opted either of my kids out of the curriculum for a couple of reasons. Number one, there is a stigmatizing factor that concerns me to how my child sit out of the classroom instruction, and I think that is a valid concern of her father's race. I don't have a problem with probably ninety-five percent of what is being taught. And I am conscious of cowering the mind too much. I might be critical of certain aspects, but then the truth will win out. Thank you for your time tonight.
I waited this long, they covered almost everything, all I must say. Good evening, members of the Board of Education, Mr. Rota, Mr. Rosado, parents, students, and colleagues of the Westwood Regional School District. My name is Chris Pinto, the president of the Westwood Education Association, and I represent over three hundred educational professionals and secretaries in our district. I'm here tonight because I am deeply concerned about the direction of our schools. Over the last few months, we have witnessed this Board of Education completely change. Few members remain from the board who witnessed WBA members on wavering willingness to enter the district schools in the fall of 2020. We did so because we care about the students we work with and we care about what's necessary and just for our school community. What's going on now is not necessary, nor is it just. In the last two and a half years, in the last two and a half years, we have witnessed political and or personal ideologies tear this board and its predecessors apart. Instead of focusing on the role that is meant for a Board of Education as defined by state statute, we have witnessed embarrassing arguments over masks, vaccines, the State Department of Education, and many other politically charged discussions that have made these meetings must-see television once a month for two years. Through all this, WBA members have worked with our administrators to simply do our jobs to the best of our abilities. But what's happened over the last few weeks has made us reach our limit. We are here to say that enough is enough. Political and personal agendas have no place at these meetings. Last month, an absolutely and unequivocally false narrative was created by members of the board. Last month, an absolutely and unequivocally false narrative was created by members of the board, accompanied, accompanied by an attack and unfounded accusations levied against our members. This attack involved an accusation by members of this board that our elementary health, physical education teachers have created their own lessons about different types of family structures. I won't get into the specifics on who said what. All you need to do is go to the recording of previous meetings to verify what I'm referring to. Instead, let me say this loud and clear, no curriculum was modified or added. The teacher's manual, headed by both certified teaching staff, administrators, approved by the curriculum committee and Board of Education, was used to teach a lesson on different types of families. Last year, this lesson was taught and a single family complained. The teacher recalled the complaint when planning for the same lesson this year, spoke to their building principal, other health and phys ed colleagues, prior to it being taught again. It was then followed by an email from a non-tenured administrator to not teach the quote "specificity" of the types of families that the teacher's manual may delineate. Ironically, that administrator's email signature includes a quote about embracing diversity. I'd like to remind this board that Westwood schools are public schools. And as public schools, we have the responsibility to teach all students. As public schools, our role is to respect and acknowledge each other's differences. As a public school, we must promote acceptance. And through acceptance, we must work to have the students we are charged to oversee learn how to be productive members of the community regardless of age, race, creed, gender, gender expression, or sexual orientation. And if a Westwood family chooses not to have their child participate in those discussions, we have mechanisms in place to allow us to teach them appropriate lessons in another Instead of acknowledging these universal responsibilities of public schools, we have board members among us who want to create policies that aim to punish educators who don't teach what they believe should be in a lesson. Let me remind you, this, let me remind you that this, that policies governing course guides, controversial topics, resource materials, and others already exist. Let me also remind this board that despite what you want others to believe, no policies are being violated as these lessons are taught. Some members of this board have not completed any state-required trainings on what a board member's role is. So for those of you not familiar with the NJ School Board Member Code of Ethics, which you are legally required to uphold, I will remind you of two. One states that as a board member, I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children and will seek to develop and maintain public schools which meet the individual needs of all children regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. The other states that as a board member, I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools which if disclosed would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. But in all other matters, I will provide accurate information, accurate information, and in concert with my fellow and in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its schools. I ask that you reflect on those statements because you have clearly violated them. Instead of trusting the health and phys ed educational professionals, who have a combined total of over fifty years of teaching experience, you publicly denigrated them and questioned their professionalism. These teachers, whom you so callously have singled out, have taught thousands of Westwood students and are beloved in the community. They are individuals of integrity who possess both the ethics and the training on how to teach topics in an unbiased way without giving their personal opinions to students. In the past six months, members of this board have brazenly and wantonly offended many historically underrepresented groups. They have frequently compared us, the school districts, with different racial or socioeconomic demographics than Westwood to make points that are clear microaggressions. You have an opportunity to make it right and think about the unnecessary chaos you've created. The Westwood Education Association demands you make a public apology to our members who have given so much to all the students in this district. This is your parent's fault. Instead of worrying about policies having strict, open-minded, and accepting views, work to make Westwood a place that attracts others to work and live here. Because no matter what you believe, every one of our students deserves to feel welcome and safe in our schools. That is your charge, uphold it.
Mayor, can you get yourself a seat for one moment? I'd like to say your words. Thank you. So, over the last few days, I've had some discussions with Mr. Pinto, and I've been contacted by some of the press to make comment. And I think sometimes letters to newspapers can be very screwed. So, clearly, there is a lot of things that have gone on over the last few weeks or since the last board meeting or even prior to that. And I think some of the comments made and some of the things said have developed their own life on social media. But we live in a world where perception has become reality sometimes. And where people make statements, everyone else has held accountable for them. So, as the president of this board, I contemplated, knowing that the WEA would receive an apology for what was said. And as the president of this board, I think it's incumbent upon me to try to make excuses because I think at the end of the day, we try to work together for all the students, for all the families, and for all the people in this district. And I think it's important. So I wrote something, and I'm just gonna read that because I probably missed the key point. You were there when I was speaking, and then somebody would light me up and call me a pig on social media like they happened to do this weekend. So, you know, because we preach tolerance, obviously. The WEA has asked for an apology, and out of respect for the individuals requesting it, the members, the district, and this Board of Education and the public that we serve, I'll be the guy to issue the public apology. So, on behalf of this Board of Education, I would like to apologize for any misinformation, discriminatory comments, or any comments perceived that way, which may have come from any members sitting up here that has been put out in the public realm. We do not promote or condone discrimination of any kind concerning people. We believe in upholding policy and treating all students and families with equal respect, understanding, and acceptance. Westwood and Washington Township are both considered to be stigma-free communities, and it's our intention to work to keep it that way. I want you to know that this board has heard your comments tonight. I personally consider myself a leader, but always receptive and open to feedback, whether positive or negative. And I thank you all for coming out tonight. Much like all of you, we want to continue to move this district forward and show it in a positive light. I want all of you to know that I plan to do my best to make that happen as we navigate the challenges facing this district moving forward. Lastly, but certainly not least, I want to stress that I personally, and I hope we as a board, support, respect, appreciate, and value all of the teachers and professional educators that work for this district. Any commentary to suggest otherwise is not true and a misrepresentation of the core and fundamental beliefs of this board. So, I'd like to thank the WEA for coming out tonight. I'd like to thank you for your words, the discussions, the debate, and I'd like to thank you for the work that you do for the children of this community. With that, I'll open the floor for the next person to speak. Thank you.
My name is Dana Karen Helle, and I am a physical education and health teacher at Jesse F. George School in Washington Township. After watching and listening to the recorded March board meeting, I felt strongly that statements made by the board members were not only inaccurate regarding the elementary health curriculum, but also accusatory to district employees. I will focus on one of the untruthful comments. Specifically, I'm referring to the allegation that one, some, or all of the district's elementary, physical education, and health teachers are taking it upon themselves to modify or add to the curriculum. That is categorically false. The board discussion last month centered around teachers, including the example of having two moms or two dads, and the discussion of two parent families in a third grade health lesson when it wasn't specifically stated in the lesson plan. Let's rewind to when this topic was first taught to district students. The title of Unit Two of the district-approved kindergarten social studies curriculum, kindergarten, is Families Are Same and Different. Nowhere in the kindergarten social studies curriculum or lesson plans does it state the concept of having two moms and two dads. Nonetheless, two of the books that the district-approved lesson plans mandated to be read to our students clearly states that two parent families can consist of a mom and a dad, two moms, or two dads. Also, the district-approved lesson plan for kindergarten says, "Discuss How Families Are Same and Different." Again, no mention of two moms or two dads. Even though the wording in those books were not written into the lesson plan, they are part of the curriculum. Fast forward to the first growth and development health lesson in third grade, you'll see similarities. One of the state standards that the district approved to be taught at this level is demonstrate ways to promote dignity and respect for all people. The district-approved objective in the lesson plan is define the word "family" and identify different types of families. The content of the district-approved lesson says, "Through the reading and discussion, define the word 'family' and identify different types of families." It goes on to say, "Define and discuss single parent and two-parent families, divorced, blended family, and an extended family." When discussing two-parent families, I reference mom and dad. I reference foster parents. I reference a parent and a grandparent. None of that is stated in the lesson plan. And yes, I reference two moms and two dads. To even hint that if health educators reference to two moms and two dads in that lesson constitutes modifying or altering the health curriculum because it wasn't specifically stated is irresponsible, ludicrous, and borders unslammed. I expect more, members of the board.
Sarah Stewart, Taco Ave, Berkeley Elementary School. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Sarah Stewart. I'm an alumni of Westwood High School, a resident of Westwood, a proud parent of three children, and a kindergarten teacher of Berkeley School. My cardinal blood is so deep, and all I want is to be proud of this wonderful community that I call home. All members of our community are important, and I am most proud to have Ms. Leachey, Berkeley Elementary Health, Physical Education Teacher, and High School Coach as part of our cardinal community. It is really important to me that Leachey knows that she belongs here, as do many of our other students, parents, staff members in our community, and that we all remember Westwood and Washington Township both to be stigma-free communities. When I didn't, I didn't decide to speak tonight. When Leachey was deciding she wanted to speak, she was worried about the time limit, so I am speaking now on behalf of her because she belongs here and her voice matters. Leachey wanted to speak to clear up some of the confusion and misinformation coming directly from the Board of Education meeting that occurred last month. The Board of Education's discussion at last meeting was especially disheartening to her. The dialogue was directed at her and her PE colleagues. The board should have addressed their concerns directly with the phys ed department prior to broadcasting this message to the entire community. Ms. Leachey feels it was important to set the record straight in regards to the opinions of the board and the accusations. The health curriculum came to be. In June of 2021, administrators, including the elementary curriculum director and assistant principal, held a meeting with the four elementary phys ed teachers to discuss the adoption of state-mandated health standards. In order to teach these standards in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, those administrators would do research on vast health practices out there so the phys ed department did not have to create lessons from their own research. After careful consideration, they were told from administration that the Great Body Shop had been selected. The Great Body Shop comes with pre-written lessons so that the phys ed teachers did not have to worry about creating anything independently. The Great Body Shop isn't just a resource, it's the resource, it's the lesson plan. Our district purchased it, and the first thing the phys ed staff did as a committee was to decide where to confine sensitive topics. Those grade levels were decided to be second grade and fifth grade based on state standards. In these sensitive lessons, the phys ed staff put meticulous detail in all the necessary and specific language so that families could have all the information they need to make the best decision for their children. They did this to be completely transparent. They want to point out that this is not usual protocol when it comes to lesson plan construction, but it was specifically made for these opt-out lessons.
Hi, my name is Christine Leachey. I'm a phys ed teacher at Berkeley Elementary School, and I'm going to continue. There has been a lot of confusion as to what this third grade lesson is actually about. It is about inclusion, acceptance, and awareness, including different religions, customs, celebrations, family values, and family makeups. This lesson is not about homosexuality or passing beliefs on to children. It is clearly stated in the objectives that we will define the word "family" and identify the different types of families, show how you respect the importance of all family members. The standard clearly states that we will demonstrate ways to promote dignity and respect for all people, including sexual orientation, gender identity and expression, race, ethnicity, socioeconomic status, differing ability, immigration status, family configuration. It is our job as educators to make sure students can show mastery of these standards. The kicker to all of this is, it is also the second grade alternative lesson, all about families, because it was deemed a nonsensical topic. The first part of the third grade lesson, which brought a lot of discussion last month, talks about the different religions and customs that families may celebrate, such as Christmas, Hanukkah, Chinese New Year, and the Feast of the Three Kings. The front cover of the student edition that goes home with students has a picture of Chinese New Year celebration and written text about different religions and religious celebrations. With this being said, I kindly ask the members of the board, don't cherry pick what among the list goes against your beliefs. I.e., families with same-gendered parents should not be cherry picked as a sensitive topic if families who celebrate Hanukkah or not. Personal beliefs have no place in curriculum content appropriateness. In short, the lesson didn't go rogue or lack transparency. We are educating children on all that exists when it comes to families and family customs. As educators of public education, we do not push our own beliefs or omit skills and knowledge that go along with mastery of standard. And finally, on a personal note, I am a member of the LGBTQ plus community. But that is the least interesting thing about me. I am a friend, daughter, sister, athlete, musician, and a Catholic. I am kind, caring, passionate, and I am a highly qualified educator, qualified enough to receive the Educator of the Year Award in 2019. I exist in this world just as much as anyone else, as do each and every one of our students, regardless of personal, religious, or political beliefs. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Melissa Charian. Did you ever? I'd like to start out by saying being LGBTQ plus is not political. It is how people identify, and we have fought very hard to find a community that makes me feel comfortable and safe. Going to a school should be a place that welcomes everyone, government buildings, pride flags, by jury, jury. Because it shows that school is a community where a diverse group of people find each other and feel comfortable. We cannot hide the fact that members of the LGBTQ plus attend this school on a regular basis, many of which are educated beyond the least, and who are amazing to me. Many of whom have made me feel beyond comfortable and have really helped me find myself. While you say that this is not necessary to have a pride flag to make people feel included, I have to disagree. It's because people view LGBTQ plus issues as sensitive that we do not care about.
Hello, my name is Samantha Murphy. I am a student at this school. Being gay is not political, that's who they are. That's like saying being white blind is political. Just because it's the minority doesn't mean it's political. These people's lives and existences shouldn't be up for debate. Since a very young age, I experienced a hate that is prevalent in this district. Just this year, there was a video going around of someone threatening to sexually assault queer people, and they said it in much less time terms. This student was never normalized in any way. There was no reprimanding for this action, which is absolutely insane. I have heard so many slurs walking through the halls and just have seen so many horrible events happen to all sorts of minorities. Gay people are definitely one of them. When I see a pride flag, I know that that teacher is safe and will stand up when these horrific things are being done. Unfortunately, that is not the case district-wide. Maybe if we learned about queerness at an earlier age, the kids would be more tolerant and everyone could feel safer in this district.
Andrea Garispiar, Fort Gipley, Kinder and Child Road, Westwood, Michigan. First, I would like to say that nobody on the board should ever criticize nor undermine the weight of Ms. Fox's words when she says that she needs the pride flag to feel safe. Or any LGBTQ plus child needs to know when they, it is flown outside of a building. Ms. Cooper? Ms. Cooper? No, no, please, I would like the respect, you ask for the respect, I would like the respect for you to look at me when I am asking.
You're not supposed to address board members directly. You have a seat. Thank you. No, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. It's my meeting. I'm running. Excuse me.
I can talk.
No, listen, you're not supposed to address board members directly, Andrea. You would know that. You were a board member. It's actually in the rules, so just accept it. Don't need to have a seat. Thank you.
No, I am standing here, and I'm going to say what I'm going to say. And what I am saying is that when.
Well, sir, can you please just work? We have rules, folks. We have, we have rules. You're, you're not supposed to. This is, this is not a.
I have the right to.
You do. Follow the rules. You follow the rules. You're being asked to follow the rules.
I am following.
You're not. This is not a back-and-forth god law.
Everybody get up and leave. They're disrespectful.
It doesn't work that way.
Disrespectful.
That's pathetic, pathetic man. You're a pathetic man.
Thank you, Kelly.
Let her speak. Let her speak. Are you scared, are you scared of her? Are you scared of her?
Okay, can the crowd be quiet or would you like the meeting to end? We really don't need everybody in the audience yelling and demanding. and demanding certain things. So there's rules. Mrs. Gerispiar, would you like to follow the rules, yes or no? Yes?
Yes.
Would you like a second chance? You're not supposed to address the board members directly. You understand that, right? This is not a back-and-forth dialogue with the individual board members. You understand that, correct?
Yes, but I would like to...
Okay, so if you'd like to follow, if you'd like to follow the rules, I will give you a second chance to do that.
I would like the respect of every board member to actually acknowledge that I am actually speaking to them and actually like looking at me while I am speaking. I would like the respect. When you are speaking, she'll look at you while you are speaking. So I would like the same respect. And not have somebody look down or text people on their phone while I am speaking. Anyway...
Okay, can, can everybody let the speaker speak?
So...
If we're going to do this, let's follow the rules for decorum for the 15th time tonight.
As I was saying. That it was said that it should be unnecessary for the pride flag to be flown outside because it is a symbol. Well, isn't the United States flag a symbol for us as pride and as unity? Why do US embassies fly the flag to show our citizens around the world that they are a safe haven? A safe haven for anyone to come and come to the embassy to know that they are safe. And that is what our LGBTQ children need, is to know that when they see this flag outside, flown on, doesn't have to be the same mask as the one as the United States flag, but to know that they are safe. They need this symbol. Please, stop this nonsense. So what does it mean that, A, now if we want to fly a Dr. Seuss flag for Dr. Seuss Week, that we can't, that our public schools, our elementary schools can't fly a Dr. Seuss flag for Kindness Week? They can't fly a Kindness Week flag outside our buildings for our PSOs? What is it going to come down to? We need symbols, just like we need our United States flag to fly because we need to show unity and pride. They also need unity and pride for our LGBTQ students. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jacey Fox. I'm a 28-hour score practitioner at Walthamton. That's my daughter, okay. I wasn't planning on speaking today, but she spoke and she showed me what a leader actually is. And so now I'm an entire... I feel like the Board has lost their opportunity to be leaders when it comes to the issue of diversity and inclusion. I'm a social worker. I'm a therapist. And I've seen the damage that people who are not included, people who are excluded, who are oppressed, I've seen the damage that that can do. And the process for beginning and repairing the damage that's been done comes in steps. And it's a process. And one of the steps in that process very well for people wanting to pray for the pride flag. It's a simple thing that means a lot to a lot of people, to a group of people who have been oppressed for a long time. I've never been oppressed. I'm a white man. I'm at the top of the food chain. Nothing could bother me. I don't get offended. But that doesn't mean that I can't be a part of the solution. And I need to be a part of the solution for my daughter, for other people like her, for our entire community. This school is a reflection of our community. We're not inclusive. That's the message that gets sent to everybody else. And it's embarrassing. My daughter identified as an LGBTQ plus member. And when she talks about the relationship she has with her teachers, that's where she feels safe, with those relationships, the individual teachers in this school, the lit man who have taken her in and been a great part of her life. And that is something that I'm truly grateful for. And I just hope and urge that it's time for the Board to catch up. You're behind. Let's, let's see some real inclusion and diversity in this town, in this community.
I'm here in the elementary district, Ramsey, New Jersey. I'm here because of having a niece in grade school and a nephew in middle school. Now, on discussions of the flag and discussions I have with Ms. Fox. This is a symbol of safety for us. This, I have lived 46 years as an out and proud gay man. I forgot to say that earlier. And I have been persecuted my entire life. None of you know what it's like to be us. None of you know what it's like to walk down the street side by side with friends and I can touch each other and a car window rolls down and I hear "faggot" yell out at me. I have not heard the word "faggot" my entire life and I've had to endure that. I said I'm gay at 20 and I lost my rights in this country. I couldn't marry. I had no protections in my jobs. I didn't have protections in my community anymore. And then when I went through elementary school, middle school, there was no bullying laws. I endured massive bullying every day. I'll never forget sixth grade. I had a plan of action to run home for safety because no one could help me. I was bullied every damn day of my life. I had to do, so I was barely educated to a certain degree because I was so scared to survive, not to get beaten up beyond belief. And only when I did on school grounds get beaten up beyond belief, did I finally get recourse and get some safety. This flag, when I'm looking in the world and walking around, this tells me I'm safe there. This tells me it's inclusive there. You have an epidemic of bullying. Ms. Fox brought that up about two to three meetings ago when she came out of the closet on public record. And only two members, and I excuse you Superintendent, you are not present at the time on this board when this happened. Only two members of this Board acknowledged Ms. Fox's bravery and eloquence. Mr. Garcia, Ms. Peck, thank you for that. Twice I brought this up. And twice only Ms. Peck and Mr. Garcia acknowledged Ms. Fox's bravery and eloquence and incredible stature. She is a board member. She's not just a student, but she's also a student. And to this day, only those two have acknowledged her. But you all say you care about her? You didn't acknowledge her. Where's the care? Where's the compassion of this Board? And she brought up before to say we have an epidemic in the middle school of bullying and in the high school especially. And there's Victor Anon in grade school. My, my nephew, who's in sixth grade, had said that he went against an anti-LGBTQ comment. So I asked Matt, I asked him, why did you do that? And he turns, he goes, because I have a gay uncle who's incredible, who cares about me. And I will fight for you because you fight for me. That's an amazing kid. And he's in this district. And he should have a right to feel safe. And he's also getting bullied, by the way.
Hi, my name is Mara Geppel. I'm a junior at the high school. I come up here now to talk about my experience in this school as a queer and trans student. I don't often publicly say that I am queer and trans because of the fear that I would be bullied. I have been bullied in this school district where nothing has come out of it.
It's okay.
On three separate occasions, because of bullying I have endured in this school district, I have attempted to take my own life. And it is because of the support of these teachers who stand behind me that I am still here. They have taught me that I am stronger than I have ever known, that I deserve a place in this world, that I am worthy of life and love and acceptance, that I am worthy of my own life and my own experiences, that I am not alone. And I applaud them because they do this every day for students just like me who struggle. And you do not see us, you do not hear us, and you do not stand for us. Because if you did, you would not be treating us this way. You would not be treating them this way. They do not deserve this. They are amazing people who do great things every day for students like me. And they deserve your respect. And that is what I am asking for today, for your respect for me, for students like me, for teachers like them who stand up for students like me. This community deserves your respect. And we deserve people just like them in this district who make a difference, who make us believe that we are worth something. Thank you.
My name is Joan Demas. And I've lived at 79 Seventh Avenue in Westwood since 1974. I'm a retired teacher after 43 years of service. My husband served on this Board for over seven years. I am embarrassed to be here tonight and to see and hear what I heard. You need to get together. You need to work together. You weren't elected to promote your own agenda. You were elected to serve this community. You were elected to serve the students of this community, the parents of this community, and to respect the teachers. You were not elected to create the curriculum or dictate the curriculum. It's embarrassing. It's obvious that you don't get along. You need to go to meetings, to learn to work together, to show respect for one another. Every single one of you. And I'm not addressing any one of you. I'm addressing all of you. It is embarrassing. These students who have come up here courageously to speak to you, I have more respect for them right now than the adults that I'm facing. My children went through the school system. They did very well because of the teachers. I think that you need to take another look at the way that you treat the teachers, the community, and each other. Put your personal agendas aside.
Toby Anderson, 619 Hickory Street.
How'd you go?
I would also like to point out, you were elected. And you were elected because you said you were going to approve this district. Thank you, because that's what it's like you're trying to do. There's a lot of gaslighting going on on an oppressive scale. But first, before I address that, I'd like to say, bullying, whether it's sexual, religious, ethnic, or racial, is evil. It should be prevented and punished when it's found and when it happens. I'd also like to say that every flag is political. That flag is political. I've worn it overseas in a war. It's a political flag. Every flag is political. I want everyone to review the test scores because this is about test scores, test scores, test scores. The NJSLA tests are the only objective standard we have of performance in this district. I would like to know, who are the unfortunate? I, I wouldn't want to know the actual kid, but I wonder, who are the unfortunate kids who were failed by the district and who are in the 78% of eighth graders who did not pass math or science? I would love for the union president to explain how that should be approved and how the union will help to approve that with the district. Because that was the worst score, but there were a lot of others that were really bad too. And we graduate 97% of the kids from high school and yet not 97% pass those test scores. That's the only objective criteria we have that people actually have the knowledge to move on. That should be a compliment to everyone. It's wonderful that some kids go on to good universities. And kudos to all of you that do. It's a credit to you. I did not catcall any of you or comment, by the way, for those that are. It does not change the fact that a lot of children are not getting the education they should be getting in the core subjects. And all of this other stuff is distracting from the core mission, which benefits every kid, whether they are gay or not gay, is to learn the basics, what the schools are actually there for. The test scores are publicly available on the WWRSC website from the October 22 meeting for anybody who doesn't actually believe me about it. If it offends anyone that they are upset, that they are, or they are upset about public criticism of these test scores, whether they are an administrator or a teacher, then they should go into private industry and not work in public or work to figure out how to fix the problem. No one who has spoken up against the leftists tonight has said anything even remotely hateful about any group. And the constant drumbeat obtained by the left is simply an attempt to marginalize another community that simply believes differently about a topic of great public interest. The union president said he has seen a major transformation in the Board in the last three months. That's called democracy. You may not like it, but that is what it is. I agree. Enough is enough.
Can you hear me? I'm Silaria, 29th Avenue in Westwood. First, thank you all. I voted for most of you. Do not regret that decision. Thank you. So there is a false narrative that opting out of certain subject topics, however you want to call it, is easy and we can just opt out. So the opt-out process is confusing on purpose. The administrations have multiple emails with links that bring you to more links that bring you to pages of lessons where the sensitive material is hidden. My wife emailed the principals in Porty Carmichael one week about the third grade material. A lesson, he was told, that there was no opt-out needed. Dr. Warner actually said, while sitting up there, that in the third grade, there is no opt-out required. That's on video recorded. A few days later, all of a sudden, there was an alternate lesson plan and an option to opt out. We were only given minimal time to opt out, by the way. She wasn't here and we had a hard time navigating the website. The fact that children may be taught about two men or two women as parents is not the issue. I'm very supportive of the LGBTQ community, actually. The issue is when asked what they are going to learn, we were quote, "one thing." And within days, that hasn't shown. That's not acceptable. There are parents in this community that are afraid to opt their children out due to social backlash and being labeled as Nazis, bigots, transphobic. We were even told on occasion to move if we don't like it. I've been, I've been here my entire life. Why should I have to leave? I like it here. On occasion, your own board member had prejudice against members who opted out of the third grade family lessons. An opt-out in or after, an opt-out in or after school lessons would be best. Another point is that most other parents who don't opt out don't have access. Some don't have access to computers, smartphones, to download or do their research for materials. They can't find it. Some internet issues. They don't read the emails. Actually, I have one parent say, I never read emails. I don't really, you know, they don't really care to look into it. And then when they found out about it, they started reading emails. And they just trust what they're told. And in some cases, you know, they don't speak the language and they don't read the language. And opt-out is not the answer. When we do not have our children have a second grade. So there was a time last year we tried to help... we tried to help our daughter have a second grade lesson. And we were told that there was a curriculum set out for that. And when that time came, she was just put me to the principal's office with no supervision, no plan of lesson, and with another boy was putting in a program. I have not seen anything different yet. Thank you.
My name is Christine Murphy. I spoke before. I don't even want to come tonight. I'm a pumpkin. I attend church every single week. I will tell you, I don't see a lot of you there. But I do, though. My children did every sacrament. I have twins. They're juniors. I don't understand. All we're saying you're talking about is what my children live as a reality. We grew up with a boy who had two dads. They are awesome. One of the best sons of parents I ever met. Should we marginalize that child because someone doesn't agree with the fact that he has two dads? It's actual reality that my children live. Now, when my children got their education, they didn't realize that this child had two dads. They just thought it was really cool that he had somebody who hated you every single event. That's what they saw. They didn't care. They didn't think about it kindergarten, in first grade, in second grade, in third grade, any of that. You're making it sexualized. My children didn't think that way. I have children-- I have a child on the autism spectrum. And I have to tell you, as I sit here and you talk about special interests, that LGBTQ is special interests? Absolutely not. They're children. My child on the autism spectrum is a child. He's not a special interest. He's a line on your budget, which kind of bothers me a little bit, but he's not a special interest. Mackenzie Queen should be-- wrong, Mackenzie. I am so sorry. Fox should be celebrated today for her bravery. I can't believe that a child could sit up there and say what she did so eloquently. And then I cannot believe that board members then addressed her without really hearing what she had to say. Because reality is, she's telling you her actual experience. She should be celebrated with the Gay Pride Flag in the month of June, because she should be celebrated. It is not a status symbol. It is what children are. They will be who they are. And who knows? Maybe some of your children will end up deciding who they truly are. But if you're that scared about it, you need to parent your children like I do. I talk to them. It is not just about what they learn in the classroom. It is what they learn at home with a priest who actually can tell you both of my children's names. So please don't tell me I'm a leftist. Please don't tell me anything. Tonight I sat with the valedictorian, a child going to Georgetown. These are my children's friends. She's here to sit there and support these people. Let them. Thank you.
You'll let me on the half hour allotted for a public session and a motion to extend public session. Let's do it this way, so we don't have to keep doing it. How many people intend to speak further this evening? By show of hands. One, two, three, four, five. I can't see why I'm quoting this. Okay. One, two, three, four, five, six. Just up front, anybody else in the back? By show of hands, anybody who should speak? Two, three, six, nine. All right, three of nine will consent for another half hour. Or can I have a motion to accept another half hour? Mr. President? Second? Mr. Garcia, please, question? Okay.
I did say, "If a board member is allowed a long hour, it's completely necessary." But one thing that struck me is that Mr. Pinder referred what I thought, and that is, I don't see that you-- any evidence that you all attended the trainings and the workshops and-- well, you wouldn't even be doing some things. You need to know all the rules. You need to get advice from the New York School Board Association. You have someone come here and talk to you. You can ask questions. There are workshops always to play with. You can make them online. But you have to take this seriously. This is a hard job, and it has rules and it has consequences. And this board, for the most part, does not show any evidence of understanding what the role of a board member is and what your job is. You need to examine your own motives. You need to know what this means. This is a very, very critical part of education. And you need to know-- you need training for this job. And at the bottom of this Code of Ethics, it says, "Each District Board of Education and Charter School Board of Trustees shall discuss annually the School Ethics Act and the Code of Ethics for school board members. Adopt policies and procedures regarding the training of District Board of Education and Charter School Board Trustees, members of the Code of Ethics." I won't be dressed with it. But seriously, you have got to get your training, because you will see a path to get the things you want done. And there won't be fifty million people standing here horrified.
I'm Lea O'Leary, 18 Goodwin Terrace. I just wanted to speak-- I believe I'm speaking for every woman in this room who felt that humiliation that Andrea Gersmeyer just experienced. To all the young women here, to my nieces who are here, to my mother-in-law who's home listening, and to all of my women friends, do not let a man speak to you that way. And Mr. Paco, I really want to make this fair representation. That was completely out of line. I apologize to our Sir John who had been put in that situation. That was it. Fear of what you could do when we speak out against you. Not good.
I'm Lisa Montemps, 136 Lafayette Terrace. I will be really brief. Everything that we've heard tonight leads me to believe that the formulation of this ad hoc committee to examine or reexamine the state standard is really not necessary. And I would respectfully request that if the committee has already been formed, that it be dissolved. I'm going to assume that neither Mr. Garcia or Mrs. Peck were assigned to that committee, which also disturbs me because it would imply a lack of balance, perspectives. But regardless, at this point, I think it's clear that there's no need for it. You've heard from the WBA, from educators, from parents. You've heard from a health educator with many years of experience. You've heard that there's legal issues involved with trying to undermine the standards. And even just doing this as an exploratory exercise is a waste of taxpayers' time and money. So I would respectfully ask that this committee not be formed if it has the act, and if it has, it be dissolved. Thank you.
I'm Chris Athler, 35 Martin Place in Westwood. I just want to say kudos to the teachers who are still here. I had a board event meeting on Monday night in my own district, and I left at 10:30. Sorry, I think I did it. And I leave until 11:30 already. But good for you guys. I'm a lifelong resident of Westwood. I graduated from this very high school nineteen years ago. I'm an elementary school teacher in Hackensack. I'm in my tenth year as a teacher, my fourteenth year overall as an educator. I'm a very proud gay man, and I'm very proud to work in a district that actually does fly pride flag all year round on our administrative building. Those of you sitting up there who are behind me who believe that pride flag is unneeded for members of the LGBTQ+ community to feel welcome are speaking from a place of great privilege. It's a place of privilege that not all of us get to have. I have been called the word faggot more times in my life than I care to remember. For those of you who don't know what it's like to have someone call you a slur that's meant to degrade and demean you, it cuts deep. To listen to somebody use it so lightly around you like it's nothing, even if they're not referring to you, it cuts deep. I've been forced to hold my tongue when listening to family members and acquaintances make negative comments or support the actions of places like Florida and Tennessee and so many others. I've been made to feel like an outcast by others because of my sexual orientation. Not because I'm a good person, but just because I'm gay. But that flag, that pride flag that some of you consider to be just a piece of fabric, it's a unifying symbol for some of us. When we see it, we feel comfort. We feel safety. We feel acceptance. We feel pride. One day, I would love for this country not to need to have pride flags flying everywhere. Today is not my day. I want to add, if you choose to be a board event member and hold a public position as many as all of you up there are, you need to have thick skin. You need to expect some of the comments that you've gotten tonight. And you need to listen to the members of the community. I really appreciate all the red that I've seen tonight because it shows the community values of the members of Westwood, Washington Township. If you can't support the staff and students who you have truly let down with your subpar jobs, I urge you to resign from your positions.
Tyler Farina, 125 James Street. I'd like to start by saying that I'm a couple generations here. My grandparents both went here. Both of my parents went here. My great-grandmother lived in Westwood. Some of you that sit up there like to talk about how you're friendly with my parents and you may know them. You may reside by me. And you say your best wishes to us, but I don't feel that they're really meant. I don't know if you're trying to stay face. I don't know if it's for them to run, like vote for you next time. But for the younger generations that are finally able to obtain information and realize like how bad this is getting, it's-- you're going to start to lose a lot of votes. And for the people saying that opting out isn't really easy, that's probably because opting out isn't the standard. And doesn't that suck not being the standard? Maybe it's a little harder. I don't know. And yeah, I just take a thought next time you want to run because you're embarrassing yourselves for everyone else. And I will too, though.
Andrea Gersmeyer. You don't know her by now. I guess you haven't seen a meeting in the last five years. Well, I'll say it. I feel I'm supposed to. Because, you know, that's the rules. 450 Kendrick Mac Road, Westwood, New Jersey. So the overall, the overarching theme tonight, there's been some-- it's like a prison. It's like onions. An onion has layers, right? But the core of the onion is that what the role of the board is, right? It's what prompted the letter to the editor and fourteen former board trustees that knew what their role was. So whether we take away from this evening, whether or not we should fly a pride flag or what kind of flags are outside the building or PSO officers, honestly, that's the stuff that should be taken up the bulk of the meeting and not the rest of this unnecessary distraction from making this the best issue they can be. So just like Ms. Mountain said so eloquently, what it means to get up to speed on the role of the board, the Code of Ethics, it's your duty. Whether it's go one, two, or three, I urge you to get it done. So I want to address the hugest double standard I ever heard about ten minutes ago, without saying anybody's name. If you want everyone to follow the rules, you first. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Eric Dargy. I live at 44 Kingsbury Avenue. I had no intention of speaking tonight. There was a tremendous amount of bravery shown in this room tonight. It's not easy to get up here in general. I'm a white, straight male. I have it as easy as it comes. And I was just amazed at the bravery that I saw. Shout out to Mr. Stuart Disleesi, my daughter's greatest lover. I just wanted to take a different route here. It's a free country. Everyone can believe and do what they want. I'm a Bible-believing Christian, but I disagree with a lot of what you guys are trying to do here to remove curriculum that includes people. I'm not-- never going to tell anyone what to do as far as who they love, who they marry. I believe in the Bible, but I won't tell anyone what to do. I won't stand in their way. I've heard religious reasoning being spoken about in this board as why this needs to be addressed and why this needs to be cut out of the school for your religious sake. The Bible that I read, the Bible that I believe, the gospel that I try to live in my life, that gospel transcends division. It bridges the unbridgeable gap. That's what it should be. And if your gospel is causing a vision, maybe it's broken. Thank you.
Anybody else who'd like to speak?
Hi there. Sabrina Patrick, 270 Washington Avenue in Westwood. Going to start by saying, "Thank you." It has been a long night. You've listened to some really tough conversations. The reaction may or may not have been great, but I appreciate, as a taxpayer and being representative, that you sat and you listened. I just wanted to clarify. I think there was some conversation they might have left about the opt-out policy. I've opted my kids out of things throughout the years. It's really simple. Dear principal, Dear principal, so-and-so is not participating. Thank you. Email back, gotcha. That's it. That's all it's been. It's never been a question, it's never been try to convince me to do something else, it's been gotcha. So I don't know what narrative is being played. Maybe people are opting out of individual lessons that are put forth, but still, all of the curriculum is on the website. It's a couple little dropdown screens and poof, the curriculum's there. Item one, no. Item two, yes. Principal, I'm opting so-and-so out of lesson A, B, C, D? Thank you. Done. This is not complicated, it's in an email. So I just wanted to clarify that because I've done it, I've lived a life. My kids have never been ostracized, my kids have never been left out, my kids just go about the time. Do they read a book in the library? Probably. Have I kept them home for a couple hours and brought them in later? Absolutely. But it's never been such a big deal, let's not make a mountain out of a molehill.
Nicole Martin, 642 Ford Avenue, Westwood. And I actually just want to address the audience because this turnout has been absolutely amazing. It's late, a lot of people went home, I hope they watch this tomorrow. Thank you, thank you, thank you to the teachers who came out. This was hard, this was a vulnerable place. Vulnerability, the kids who are out here today, oh my gosh, I could never have done what you did tonight. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you to the members, the allies, the community members that includes relatives that are here on behalf of their family members. This is what we wanted to see within the community, and if I take a quick look, minus some of the people who have left, it is more than 10 people. And if we look at the ratio, it is very close to the opt-out numbers for those who spoke against and those who are for. So this is absolutely your meeting, it's our meeting, this is not your meeting. This board is to help our community get what they need to represent everybody. Please, let's not forget that.
Anybody else? Seeing none, all business, everybody have all business?
There were a few people who referenced the word going rogue this evening. I just wanted to clarify that I am the only person at the last board meeting that used the word going rogue, but I was using the word going rogue because I was taking the words of other board members and just applying what they were implying. So when we have board members who say... The bigger issue is that we now have our curriculum in our district and it was intended to be implemented in a certain way and in certain content and certain lesson plans, and we now have teachers who are taking it upon themselves to modify that and add to it, and I think it just opens a can of worms and we need to do something to address that. Or we have children that are not getting taught, so why aren't we focusing on that and why aren't the teachers focused on that rather than taking liberties with the manual? If we could, Dr. Mortimer, if you could help us understand what measures we could put in place to ensure that the teachers are held accountable to sticking to the curriculum and not taking it upon themselves to add things at their free will. Those words to me imply that teachers were doing something wrong and going rogue, and I wanted to make it clear that I don't think, and I don't think most of the community thinks that you did anything wrong and are going rogue, or modifying, or trying to slip something in that wasn't there, nor do I believe that the teachers should be punished for that. I think we have policies in place. If a teacher does do something wrong, we've all sat in the exec session and heard the occasional incident where a teacher did something wrong, the principals got involved, the superintendent got involved, and we were informed. It's not our job to punish the teachers if they do say a word that wasn't exactly in the lesson plan, because we don't like the lesson plans. The other thing, I guess we technically have no business because I missed it in the policy before, under parent organizations 9120 policy, the board requires that all district parent organizations are to be held accountable to the building principal and district superintendent with which they are associated, which is already done. I don't think we need to put anything else into this policy. But to say that the board requires that the presidents of all parent organizations within the district along with their building principals meet on a quarterly basis to provide a detailed outline of their events and plans to ensure alignment of PSO activities with district goals and curriculums, again, not our responsibility. I don't know who this provided, the detailed outline is supposed to go to, but it wouldn't come to the board because that's not our job. So I think that, you know, we're overstepping when we try to regulate what the principals and the PSO was required to do.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have business? Ms. Peterson?
This is my actual own business, but Mrs. Pack, you just spoke about a lot, I'm not going to address any of it, but I do want to point out that you just had an ethics violation by discussing things that were discussed in executive session.
Anybody else? It's really not the right forum, so what's said can be said. I'm asking anybody else if they'd like to say anything or move on. Any more of business?
Seeing no hands, I'll address the ad hoc committee. So it is certainly within the purview of this board, or my position as board of that president, to create an ad hoc committee under policy 0155. That policy's been in existence and has not changed for some period of time. It further conforms with the code of ethics under section one, which indicates, I will uphold and enforce all those rules, regulations of the state Board of Education, the quarters pertaining to schools, desire changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures. Forming a committee to review, examine, or look over something to see if we met, fell short, or exceeded standards is certainly within the purview of the board. I actually announced it off of our attorney, who indicated that it was illegal to do so. So for everybody who's indicated that we're overstepping, that we're running the district, we're doing all these things, the committee was actually in the process of being formed. The committee has not even had a meeting, so any speculation, conjecture, or reports that the committee's gonna do X, Y, and Z, that they have preformed conclusions and all this other wonderful stuff that's been placed out there is absolutely completely false and premature. In addition, the superintendent of schools will be assigned to the committee for these discussions. It should also be noted that the committee can take no action on behalf of the board, and any recommendations that come from the committee will have had the layer of the superintendent seeing them before they even come to the board for full board discussion and subsequent vote, should there be any recommendations. So I think we've put the card before the horse proverbially here, or the toothpaste is certainly out of the two, all based on some wonderful social media posts and misinformation spreading regarding the ad hoc committee. As it is in my purview to establish it, it is hereby established, the members of the district, or the Board of Education are to be assigned to it would be the chair, Janus Rusty Perrino, Stacy Price from Curriculum, Mrs. Cooper, and myself as the ex officio, and I can fulfill the ex officio role because of other committees, vice president will stand in forming for that. So a couple of facts that go along with this, the comprehensive health curriculum that was implemented by the state is intact and currently being used in this district. The statement was is, we'd like to look at whether or not we could cede some local control back about the age appropriateness of certain standards and whether or not we could come back to superintendent to determine their own schedule of implementation. That's what was said at the last meeting. Any suggestion that it's something more than that is just a suggestion. So we've listened to everyone proffer opinion about it. They claim to have data on what is really a new set of standards. The standards have been in place just short of a year, so we don't really know whether they provide a benefit or a detriment, or anything in between. We don't know whether or not we've met, fell short, or exceeded the standards in which the state would want to have them implemented. So it's certainly appropriate to look at that, to make a determination. So there may be absolutely no recommendations from this committee, there may be recommendations from the committee, and whatever those may or may not be would certainly end up in public for discussion. So I think that there's a lot of fanfare about not much personally. So I appreciate the opinions about the ad hoc committee. I did receive all the emails, probably upwards of 200 on both sides of the argument, but it's legal to do it, it's ethical to do it, and there's layers here to ensure that no one can go rogue and just do whatever they want with it. So we're gonna go forward with that, the committee is what it is, and I anticipate that the committee would actually meet sometime in May. I don't know if that'll happen before the May board meeting, but certainly the public will be updated on any meetings and any notes taken and subsequent actions of that committee at future meetings. Thank you.
Is there discussion on that?
We're in discussion, Jay. You can say whatever you'd like.
I, again, emailed you and I asked what the qualifications, parameters, can you just explain a little bit of how your selection went? Why you chose, who you chose? I made it public that I would like to be a part of it. You never responded back.
You're right, I didn't. And the reason why is because no one on the committee wanted to work with you because they don't trust you. And if you were full, there was a word of no confidence against you in January, and if people don't feel comfortable saying what they think or feel because there is certainly information being fed to people in the public who then take information or misinformation and go ahead and create problems. So that is quite frankly why I didn't assign you to the committee, and I'm certainly within my purview to make my decisions of whether or not to assign someone to or not to assign someone to a committee. Thank you.
We're not in business yet. Mr. Sal, do you have your microphone?
So I really want to support you in being an ad hoc, I really do. And I agree with Mike, we cast that vote. It bothered me to cast that vote. I asked you a specific question that would have taken you one second to answer, and you chose not to answer the question. So I'll ask you one more time. Did you steal the flowers and the door open? Are you talking about anonymous posts? Are you talking about anonymous posts on this board? Are you asking a question?
If the committee were to want anything, it would be banned, but it's not, so that's
Is Ross Mann hacked on the force? Ross Mann?
Anybody have any own business?
What police are you with? Oh, no.
This is Washington.
Anybody else? Anybody with additional own business?
Yes, you know.
Okay, moving on, your business?
I have new business. So our role, and I've heard so much about it tonight, is to be respectful, to acknowledge each other and our differences, and I really could not agree more. In our recent full training for the POE, I met and developed a professional relationship with the trainer, Mr. Vincent Tullucia. Mr. Tullucia works for the Board of Ed and has an incredible history of achievement and credentials behind him. And I'll share his bio with everybody at the dais, and you can post it online as well. Specifically, he focuses a lot on leadership, conflict management, and productive conversations, as well as professional moderation. We have in our roles a certain amount of training and development, and I wanted to recommend to our board that we invite, invite ins here to do four things. I'd like you to interview each of us to share our perspectives, and this is standard in your developing and intervention methodology. Interview each of us to share our perspectives, find the trends of the non-productive behaviors, and train all of us to improve on those consistent themes. And I was also gonna request having to do this in one of our board meetings so that we, the board, as well as the community, have a chance to find a more effective way to work together at the public level. And separately, I'd like us all, all of us, board members, community members, together to consider joining and training with braverangels.org. Braver Angels is America's largest organization that brings conservatives and progressives together on equal terms to understand our differences, find common ground where it exists, and help the country that we all love try to find a better way. I am a member and I've been going through the training as fast as I possibly can. We want everyone here to be able to speak alternative and different perspectives without anxiety around character assassination, without being abused, without being discredited, it is a perspective, and without being demonized. They have wonderful trainings that are nonpartisan for those of us who are on the opposite side of the spectrums to help us do a better job in how we work towards collaborative solutions, and I thought it would be great to have this training happen in public, because it would go, I think, in some direction to help rebuild open and thoughtful discourse between the board, the community, and each other. So I was wondering, do we want to talk about it? This is something that we would all be open to, I think it would be beneficial.
Well, one of our goals from last year was to do additional board training, so certain someone should consider, and I'll reach out to Matthew Lees from the Board Association, see if you can arrange for that.
Yep, no problem. And then, you know, because one of the things that even I heard tonight quite frequently was some challenges around how we paraphrase. And Ms. Pack, you, I agree, you noted that you were the only person who said rogue and that you were paraphrasing for others. I think it's great to paraphrase because it brings, I'm sorry? I don't recall anybody else at this dais, I actually don't know who said going rogue, but it's okay, it's okay. Let me just explain. I think it's great when we paraphrase, we try to bring clarity to difficult topics that may have been poorly communicated. I certainly feel very much like I was misquoted and paraphrased as part of those misquotes tonight. I just ask that if we are going to paraphrase this community, that we really listen carefully and try to paraphrase correctly, and choose words that do not contort what the speaker said and present it in the most pejorative way possible. It shouldn't be like that. When I think about even what I spoke to you tonight, which is that there is a necessity for the flag, it's just an injustice and it's wrong that anybody should be, not that it's a scrap of paper, like I heard a lot of things about what I apparently was paraphrased into saying, but I think that what happens is, is that lends itself to a very knee-jerk reaction when people go down the road, so, and it implies negative intent rather than offering an alternative perspective, which I certainly welcome. So please, if we're gonna paraphrase here, please don't overlay a negative intent. We don't agree, I know we don't agree, but I welcome debate and hearing logical, alternative points of view that demonstrate that perhaps I don't, or somebody else on this dais doesn't carry the most perfect point of view on something. But it undermines all of us when a speaker is demonized. You don't need to do that if your logic is sound. Nobody has ever been character assassinated or insulted into agreement during a discussion or a negotiation, and that's one of the other reasons why I really want to strongly advocate for more formal training in how we communicate, and how people communicate also with us.
I'd just like to add that Mr. Pontola and I have already spoken regarding board additional board training, and I mean, she have reached out to our board attorney and all of the school boards to provide that. So we'll be hopefully getting some dates to maybe arrange some additional activities with the board. Ms. Person?
When we first joined the board, everything was still about on Zoom and all that, and there was a lot of discourse back then as well, and one of the things to previous board members who unfortunately are no longer here, I had tried to, my background in cooperative education, I was like, well, we should, can we do this and we'll do that, trying to come up with how we were all gonna be able to work better together.
And the board president at the time, and one of the most trained people on the board, and one of the longer-standing members had told me that any of the ideas that I was coming up with were not valid, and we couldn't do them. And then, part of it was because we all couldn't get together, because it was a global thing. We all had to get together and do a public session. And I said, okay, well, I mean, sometimes when you do cooperative education, you do some games, and you do some team building, and you do all this stuff. And I don't know how that works in public session, but could we do it? And the answer is no. So I'm just, I like the fact that we all want to be able to get better trained and be able to work best together. But if we're going to sit here and we're going to watch it, just like the kids don't learn very well like that, if we're going to sit here and we're going to watch a presentation, and we're going to listen to people talk, or whatever, is there any way to be, I don't still think that works. Is there any way to do something that's more collaborative and work together, or even do small groups and things like that, to start rotating? Because, again, like I said, when I first came on, I was all like, yay, let's make this work. And clearly it didn't, and I kept being shut down. I'm not saying that to be a martyr over here, I'm just saying, how do we do it when we have to have all of us in a public session? And then, my fear would be, if we did set up dates where we could do something, and unfortunately, somebody's schedule didn't work, then how does that disrupt the potentiality? Or the, how it looks to the community if somebody, they can't make it? I'm just throwing out, these are just the things that I was, you know... I want to be the problem solver, so I figure if I figure out that what's my great problem, someone can be ahead of me.
Ms. Price, in my experience, there are options, and things can be done. If there are five of you together, it is a board meeting, but you can advertise and follow the rules for a board retreat, in which case, it's still technically an open meeting, but all you're going to do is board training, so you may not have people coming to watch board training like you're talking about. Those things are possible to do. Probably the biggest challenge would be finding a date, to be honest. In my experience, that's usually the biggest challenge.
So we can stick a camera in the gym, and we can, you know, play golf?
I'm with it.
Okay, perfect.
Big fan of what I'm about to hear. Anything else on any business? Seeing none, take a motion to adjourn. Ms. Price, second. Ms. Peterson, call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.